Good morning, family. I'll tell you they're morning. How's everybody doing? Good, good. So again, we're here today again and just coming together, united as one, combining our hearts, combining our minds, ready to worship Jesus, right? Again, again, I'll say it, all week long, we go through a bunch of things, day in and day out, and every time, every time that we ask for the Lord's help, He's right there to help us to move forward, to fix whatever we need fixing. But if we don't give it to Him, right? If we try to do it ourselves in our humanly way, our humanly mind, if we don't give it to Him and ask for His help, you know what that, "I give it to you, you deal with it." If we don't do that, and we don't do our part in asking Him for help, then He's not gonna come in and do anything. He's gonna sit there and wait and watch and see, and see what happens, and okay, I'll wait for her to come and give me His troubles, so that I can fix it. Why? Because He wants everyone to know how glorious He is, right? He wants everyone to see that by His stripes, we are new. And if we don't give ourselves to give, if we don't give our troubles, but even our praises, it's not only our troubles, we don't only give our troubles to Him and ask Him to fix it, we give our praises and we give our thanks to Him too, right? And we ask Him to keep blessing us. Thank you for what we've got, but we ask for more. We always ask for more, we always want more from Him. And He's sitting back saying, "You know what? I'll give you more when I think you're ready for it. When you're ready for it, when you open your heart enough, if you do what this book tells you to do, then I'll give you more." Right? And we have to be faithful to that. We have to be faithful, knowing that He will take care of everything we need, no matter what.
I'm studying in a certain direction, and I've been asking for God in a certain direction, and so far, I think I've been leaning in that direction. But what I found, when I went to Pastor Dale for some instruction on a certain area, he may have read the verse, but he may have taken out certain words and put another word in its place to make more sense to me, but it still fits in accordance with God. And I found, and I found out that I think God has a favorite word, and it's called, quick quote, well, "Cleric word."
Awesome. Something that reminded me when you were talking, "Go back to the Bible," right? That's what Pastor Chris always tells us, "Go back to the Bible, and here's your answers. For whatever questions you have, I'm glad you were sent back to the Word and told, 'Go read this scripture and see what that says,' because that's exactly where we get all of our information from. We need our answers, we need whatever, it's in this book, that's what we need. So today, we're gonna, we're gonna worship today, and what I wanna do is, I wanna worship. You guys know me, you guys know I love to worship, right? I can worship all day long, I do sometimes, and that's awesome. But I want everyone to worship today, not to just come here to this place and fellowship. Yes, that's great, but we wanna worship the Lord. We wanna ask Him for His presence to come and bless this place and be with us every single moment of our life. Amen? Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we wanna say thank you, Lord. Thank you so much for this day, Lord, thank you for this time of worship, Lord. Lord, thank you for just always hearing our prayers, always being next to us, always reaching your hand down and waiting for us to grab your hand. Lord, thank you so much for always being there for us, always being that shoulder to lean on, to cry on, to ask for forgiveness, to ask for help. Lord, I ask that you come into this place today, Lord, and just, again, be with each one of us, Lord. Lord, I ask for you to forgive each one of us of our sins, Lord, and ask that you wash and cleanse this entire building, Lord, and just fill this place, Lord, with the Holy Spirit, Lord. And I ask, Lord, that no matter what happens, Lord, day in and day out, Lord, that you reign, you reign over each one of us individually, but also all of us as a church, Lord, as a Lava Chapel, as your children, Lord. Again, Lord, I give this service to you, Lord, and ask that anything, Lord, that is not of you, Lord, be taken out of this place immediately, Lord, and let your glory reign, your grace, your love, your peace, fill this place upon each one of us, Lord. And Lord, I ask that we don't sing today, Lord, but we give reverent honor to you, Lord, and that we worship with our open hearts, Lord. Not our mind, not our words, but our hearts, Lord, are open, and we worship you in all that you are, Lord. We are a small church, Lord, as you see, Lord, but we do huge things in your name. So Lord, I keep praying for more blessings upon us, Lord, as we keep following your word, or keep being obedient to you, Lord. And Lord, we have the faith, Lord, we have the faith that you will take care of each one of us the way you want us to, the way you want us to live our life. So Lord, thank you again for everything, Lord. Come and fill this place, Lord, and be with us, in Jesus' name, and we all said?
Amen.
Amen, awesome. Guys, again, let's worship. What's the point? That's what I kept thinking during worship, what's the point? Like Pastor Chris says so many times, what's the point of coming to church, coming in, getting up early, setting up on a table, doing all the multimedia, bringing the food, setting the cameras, what's the point if Jesus doesn't come? What's the point if, if we don't experience His love? What's the point if we don't experience His grace? Right? And it doesn't have to be only this spot. What's the point every day? Right? What's the point in getting in your car, or driving to work, or driving to the store? What's the point if, if Jesus isn't in the passenger seat? Right? But He shouldn't be in the passenger seat either. Where should Jesus be? That's right, He should be in your heart, in the driver's seat, driving you wherever you're supposed to go. But again, I say, what's the point? What's the point in coming and just sitting around and listening to some words and then going home? Everybody knows that I do my best to do what God is telling me, right? And it doesn't matter, I come in front and get on my knees, because that's what I was told. And, and I know I'm guilty, I don't do everything all the time. But do what you're told, do what He's telling you, right? Whatever that is, do what He's telling you, and watch what happens to your life. Watch how positive starts pouring into your life that you can't explain, right? Watch how many things just start happening over and over and over and over and over the more you keep saying yes and amen. The more you keep saying, "Okay, I'll do what you told me." The more you keep saying, "Yes, I'll read the Bible." The more you keep saying, "Yes, I'll worship." The more you keep saying, "Jesus is my Lord and Savior." Watch how much more positive comes into your life. Watch how much more, like, and you won't have to say anything. You won't have to say anything. People around you who have noticed that, things will start changing. Things will start changing, not only in your life, but around you, things will start changing, in other people's life, because they'll start seeing what you're doing, they'll start feeling differently, they'll start, you know, experiencing different things that is unexplainable to them. So they're either gonna shut it off, or they're gonna go seeking where that, where that is, where's it coming from? Where does that, where does that love coming from? Where's that awesome heart coming from? Where's all that great things that are happening to him? Where, where's it coming on from? Go ahead, I dare you. I dare you to go out and find it, because you're gonna find Jesus, right? You're gonna find Jesus. The more we, we as a church, the more we listen, and the more we obey, and the more we do what we're supposed to, the more people will start recognizing. Well, so awesome, I had this lady a couple days ago at work that, I've known her for years, great friends, and just recently, she's going through some terrible things in her life, and that's affecting her entire life. So her job starts going downhill, her work performance, her attitude, everything starts. But you know what, we still keep praying anyway. We still keep praying for her anyway, we still keep praying for the atmosphere, and she, and something clicked. Something clicked, and she realized that I need to do something different. And so she comes to work much more positive, things are starting to look up again. Just a simple turn, a simple turn, adjustment in your brain, turn that screw a little bit, and watch how awesome things will be. We're gonna do our family prayer like we do every single week, so if you look up here with me, please, ready, begin. "Jesus, I plead your blood over my sins and the sins of my nation. Bless and protect Israel and the city of Jerusalem. God, heal our pain and send us revival." Revival isn't gonna be sent, in my opinion, unless we're ready for it, right? Because if not, imagine, imagine if we're not ready for a thousand people in this building, then it'll come next week. Imagine if we're not ready for that, if we're not prepared for that. We gotta prepare ourselves, right? Our declaration for 2013, again, if you can look up here with me, ready, begin. "Your kingdom come, and your glory be done on earth as it is in heaven." Awesome. Matthew 6:10 is where we get that from, and that's gonna be what we say again every single week, our declaration for the whole year of 2013. Can anybody remember one of verses for a Lava Chapel? Our verse is Proverbs 16:3. "Commit to the Lord whatever you do, and your plans will succeed."
Good morning, family. So good to see everyone here again this morning. We, this morning, we are so blessed to have that time of worship here, what an awesome sight it was to see you again doing what God told you to do. That's what, that's what really matters, is if God is telling you to get down on your knees to worship Him in front of everybody, then get down on your knees to worship Him. Who cares what anybody else says? So many times, we're aware of, "Oh, what are they gonna think if I kneel down or lift my hands or do this? Who cares?" If God is telling you to worship Him, and get on your face, lay flat on the ground, not to draw attention to yourself, but to truly worship Him, then worship Him, okay? Here in this house, a Lava Chapel, you worship Him the way God tells you to worship. What was awesome about this morning was, you know, Eric, just the fact that God was speaking to you so clearly. And so because it's family here this morning, we're gonna go right into our continued time of worship. I want us to open our Bibles to Romans, chapter 8. Romans, chapter 8. And I'm gonna read Romans, chapter 8, from 31 all the way through the end of the chapter, out of the New Living Translation. But please follow me along in your Bible this morning. In Romans, chapter 8, verse 31, it says, "What can we say about such wonderful things as these? If God is for us, who can ever be against us? Since God did not spare even His own Son, but gave Him up for us all, won't God, who gave us Christ, also give us everything else? Who dares accuse us, whom God has chosen for His own? Will God..." No, He is the one who has given us right standing with Himself. Who then will condemn us? Will Christ Jesus? No, for He is the one who died for us and was raised to life for us, sitting in the place of highest honor next to God, pleading for us. Can anything ever separate us from Christ's love? Does it mean He no longer loves us if we have trouble or calamity, or are persecuted, or are hungry or cold, or in danger, or threatened with death? Even the Scriptures say, "For your sake we are killed every day. We are being slaughtered like sheep." No, despite all these things, overwhelming the victory is ours through Christ, who loves us. And I am convinced that nothing can ever separate us from His love. Death can't, and life can't, the angels can't, and the demons can't. Our fears for today, our worries for tomorrow, and even the powers of hell can't keep God's love away. Whether we are high above the sky or in the deepest ocean, nothing in all creation ever will ever be able to separate us from the love of God that is revealed in Christ Jesus' heart, Lord. And as we were worshiping and experiencing God's presence, He reminded me. He says, "Hey, Chris, make sure that you read Romans 8 now, and make sure that they understand what it says, that nothing in all creation will be able to separate you and I from the love of God that is in Christ Jesus." This is not a nugget, or a little bit of truth, or, you know, this is something, it is a powerful truth that you and I can put our faith in this morning, okay? And again, we teach this, and we model this frequently here at a Lava Chapel. But so many times, people think that they need to come to the pastor to get prayer, come to the cobbler to get prayer, go to one of the elders, or to the deacons to get prayer, go to one of the interceptors and get prayer. And I am not minimizing the office and calling and anointing of God upon those people. But this is what I want to remind us of this morning. Every single one of us, every single one of us, if you have put your faith in Jesus and have accepted Jesus as your personal Lord and Savior and are born again, every single one of us is fully loaded, completely equipped, to do the work that God is asking you and I to do, okay? 2 Peter, verses 1, 3, says that "God has given us everything for teen to life, and God needs it," which means what? Again, you, dear child of God, are fully loaded to do everything that Jesus said. Jesus said, "Greater works will you do, dear child of God, greater works will you do." Okay? So we are going to play, have a time of extended worship. And what I would, what would, what would be good in this time is that we lay hands for and pray for one another. No matter what it is that you're going through, we all need prayer. We all need healing, we all need help, we all need encouragement, we all need something this morning. See, sometimes we think, "Oh, man, God bless you," but you know, sometimes it goes beyond that, you know? "God bless you, but let me help you push start your car." "Hey, God bless you, but let me, you know, buy you a warm meal." "Hey, God bless you, but let me spend a little bit of time listening to what you're going through." And so, so many times, people are always, you know, in the cliche part of it, but there's a practical part for you and I to touch one another's lives this morning, okay? And so here, family of God, children of God, let's pray over one another. Let's pray the love of God. Nothing can separate us, highest heavens, lowest ocean, right? Angels, demons, nothing in all creation can separate you and I from the love of God, which is in Christ Jesus. The love of God cast up off here, the love of God helps you and I, the love of God heals, the love of God restores, the love of God saves. The love of God is what you and I need this morning. And we can have our list of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, you know, we can have our whole entire list of things that we need prayer for. But the most important thing that we need, you and I, this morning, is the love of God. And so I'm gonna ask us to stand, I'm gonna ask us to pair up, maybe with each other, you know? The brothers with brothers, students with students, you know, sisters, et cetera. But let's pair up together, and let's, let's take this time, we're gonna worship, let's take this time, and let's pray the love of God over one another. You guys, the love of God is enough. The love of God is enough. It's enough for all of us, you know? The love of God is perfect to heal and help, you know, everything up. The love of God is perfect to answer all the things that you're going through. And what I'll say is, make sure that when you do pray, it's something that's genuine, from deep within, your spirit, that is seeded in love, so that when you pray that, this blessing, Romans, chapter 8, when you pray this over somebody, that their life is touched immediately. Okay, so can we, can we do that? Can we get up, partner with one another? Remember, the same anointing that is in you and I, you know, it's the same anointing, isn't it? God doesn't give more love to one person, more love to another. You guys can, you know, just pray for each other, literally lay hands on one another, literally lay hands on one another, and pray for each other. Pray the love of God, please. Pray the love of God over one another. So family, you see what that feels like, you know, when you come into the house of God, and you're going through something, even if you came in here full of joy, full of love, full of the life of Jesus, you know, how awesome is it to pray with one another and for one another? See, that's, that's what we, that's what we call, you know, that's what we say where our family is, our church, because no matter who you are, no matter, you know, this is your first time here, your 10,000th time here, we are committed to do what God has made, administer to the people, you know, who have needs that walk through, walk into the house of God. And so awesome, you guys, thank you so much for praying for each other, that is, that is something that should be part of our lifestyle. You know, one of the things that I will say, because we have the privilege of going to the hospital yesterday to visit Ariel, and he'd been in the hospital now for a few days, been to the hospital, I think, three times this week, but now he's had two procedures or surgeries on his foot, and he has the same doctor, actually, surgeon as Eric. But, you know, yesterday, when we were there, we were visiting him, Dicky and John and I, and as we were there, you know, he was asking us, you know, he was looking at us like, "Hey, I wanna pray and get some prayer," and all of the above, you know, there was a lot going on in his, in his life yesterday, even in the hospital. But one of the things that I appreciated yesterday, John, was just the simplicity of your prayer, you know? That as we were there, and you know, it's like, sometimes they go, "Oh, Chris is here, maybe he should pray," you know, but, but it was awesome, because as we were there, you know, John, John really felt it on his heart, we really needed to pray for Ariel in the hospital. And John said this real awesome prayer over Ariel, and we were able to, you know, hold hands and agree with him there. And I just really felt God's presence so strong in that room yesterday, and it just reminded us, you guys, it's not, it's not about the elephants, it's not about how many words. If I say, "Man, the love of God be poured over you right now," is that fair enough? Yeah! If it's lined up to God's word in Romans 8, I can say, "Eric boy, may the love of God in Christ Jesus be poured and bombed over you, your marriage, your family, your house, your business, everything else, every detail of your life, in Jesus' name." Is that fair enough? Yeah! It's the love of God. It's full, it's complete, it drives out all fear. It completes all worries and anxieties. It's closer than anything else. Do you understand that? His love, not love word, the love of His presence, His love, His closeness, is closer than anything else. His love is all you and I need all the time, just His love, just His love. So I say, hey, when you go to somebody, just tell them, "Hey, God bless you," or "May the love of God be with you," that prayer is good enough. That prayer is good enough, it's awesome enough to speak those words over somebody's life. Don't think we gotta get all fancy and go through this whole, you know, thing, that's why I'm bringing up John's prayer. John's prayer was from the heart, simple, and when he prayed it, the love of God bombed, room 233, Helo Medical Center, bombed it. And I sat there, and I was like, "That was awesome." And, and so many, so many things happened. So I just say that, you can come into the house of God, but if you are not being touched by God's love, if God's love isn't reaching out and touching you, okay, through, through each other, okay? Then, you know, like Eric said earlier, what's it all for? And so I was so moved there by what God was saying to you this morning, it was powerful, okay? It's very, very powerful. This past Thursday, here's a picture right here of Debbie Lee, a really close friend, but this past Thursday was the Henry Obukahia new memoirs book release. And so if you're familiar, or if you're not familiar, this is the memoirs of Henry Obukahia, that's what it's called, right? His name is Henry Obukahia, but here is the book called The Memoirs. These memoirs were his writings, okay? When he lived in Connecticut, okay? He went from Hawaii to Connecticut, right? And he died at the young age of 26 years old. But what he did was, he penned all of these, you know, little like writings, you know? And he would journal and talk about his experiences, all of them were put in this book, or many of them, not all of them, many of them were put in this book. But this book was what God used to inspire, his memoirs or his writings, his journal, was what was used to inspire all the missionaries that came to Hawaii, okay? Debbie Lee is a descendant of Henry Obukahia. And so what they did was, Debbie, probably over 10, maybe over 15 years ago, was impressed by God to bring Henry home. He was in Connecticut, Cornwall, Connecticut, and it was time for him to come back to Hawaii, to bring his remains, his body back, his bones back to Hawaii. She was the one who pioneered that. And you've heard, she's coming, she came here a year ago, she's a really close friend and family, and she shared that. Do you guys remember that? What they've done now is they've added to this book. This book was written before Henry came home. Now what they've done is they've added an epilogue, or in addition to what their journey was for Henry coming back home, and how God uses him to still inspire people to live for God. The reason why I chose to put this as part of our service this morning, because I could just, we're gonna skip this part of it and run it, but the reason why is, when I talk to people, you gotta know, especially if you're Hawaiian, that you are a fruit or a byproduct of this man's faith. We are all, right, churches in Hawaii today, right? We are all with great respect and gratitude for this man's faith. Without this man's faith, we wouldn't have this, the church as we know it today, not called a Lava Chapel, but the church in Hawaii as a whole, okay? It was amazing to be there, it was amazing to see the speakers, all of the different people who took part in that service. Again, we'll let you guys know when we, when we air that on TV, but it was absolutely, absolutely amazing. Something a little bit different this morning, because, not different in a sense that, different that we don't open, though, we open the Bible all the time. But I think that sometimes when we read the Bible, we just read it to read it, or sometimes we hear it from somebody else. But what I wanna do this morning is, I want, I want everybody to have a pen and a paper, at least something to write with, so that you don't... But what I wanna do is, I wanna just take the simplicity of it, okay? The simplicity of God's word, okay? So what we would say, this is not what we normally do, normally I come in full nose, we preach it, we pray, and we're doing all kinds. But this morning, what I wanted is, I wanna introduce you guys to a style of a service. And you guys know, you've been coming here for years, you know, I don't do this, but I wanna introduce you guys to something, so you guys are aware that these are the kinds of things that could happen. Anybody ever heard of the word inductive Bible study? Inductive Bible study. Yeah, it's just a fancy word. What inductive Bible study is, is studying the Bible verse by verse, or precept upon precept. So for example, you would read a portion of Scripture, then you would meditate on it, you would pray on it, God would see how it fits in your own personal life, right? Either for the building up, or for the correction of your own personal life. And so what we're gonna do, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go into great detail, but I want us to give them the habit of going through God's word as Bible students and really listening to what God shows us for us this morning. and really listening to what God shows us for us this morning, okay? So I'm introducing something to you guys this morning. Let's, let's pray, let's pray, and then we're gonna go into Psalm 34. No need to close your eyes, no need to close your eyes. No, close your eyes, we don't need to. If you want to, you can, but you don't need to, okay? God is here, you know, He doesn't show up when we close our eyes, God is here all the time, okay? Ah, no. Ah, yeah, God is here all the time. She sees a lot more than we do, man. We gotta come like baby Anella, then we'll probably see it all. "But God, we humbly come before you and we thank you for your word. It is living, it is active, it is powerful, it is sharper than a two-edged sword. And we know that this morning, as we open your word, you, you promised that you would send the Holy Spirit to teach us all things and that He will guide us into all truth. We know that your word in Psalm 19 is perfect to convert the soul. It's perfect to change the way we think and we feel. So we need your direction, we need your help, we need your counsel, we need your wisdom. So as we read this today, may you, Holy Spirit, translate it to us personally. May you help it speak to us where we're at today. And God, may you again help us. We set this time apart to hear from you, not from a man, not from a woman, but to hear directly from you. We need you, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen." Awesome. So if you guys want to follow along with me, I'm gonna read just this first slide, okay? And I want you to write down the words, the thoughts, the things that come to you as you read down this word, okay? I just, that's what I'm telling you, everybody have something to write with. You write down a key word, you write down something, maybe that doesn't come through your visual gate or your ear gate, maybe something, God just downloads something to you supernaturally, okay? Sometimes we get caught up in this, "What is He saying over, what is, what have I seen?" Right? Those are your natural senses. But there's your supernatural senses as well, okay? It's a spiritual sense. And so again, I want to quicken you to write down those things that God speaks to you or gives you directly this morning as we go through His word. Verse one says, "I bless God every chance I get. My lungs expand with His praise. I live and breathe God. If things aren't going well, hear this and be happy. Join Thee in spreading the news. Together, let's get the word out. God met me more than halfway. He freed me from my anxious fears. Look at Him. Give Him your warmest smile. Never hide your feelings from Him." That's just the first slide. I want you again to write down what God is speaking to you for you. There's just five verses in the Bible, you guys, five verses out of the thousands. But you can really sense the intimacy, you can sense the closeness that the psalmist has. And the psalmist is a person, just like you and I, writing to God, singing to God, right? That's what a song is, like a song or a poem, okay? So here he is, him and God are, right, they're in the mix, they're talking. And as he's talking to God, this is what he's saying. Amazing, okay? So please again, write down what God is showing you, what you hear. What you hear, both in the natural and in the supernatural. The thing that stuck out to me was in verse four, "God met me more than halfway. He freed me from all my anxious fears." Okay? I like that. You know, because sometimes you think, "Well, if we go after God, then He'll come after us." That's true, because the Bible says, "Draw near to God, and He will draw near to you." But guess what? Even when you and I do not draw near to Him, His word declares that we love Him because He first loved us, which means what? He initiates a perfect love to you and I, even when we're completely disobedient, even when we're sticking finger and shaking our fist at God. Romans 58 says that, okay? Even when you and I were enemies with God, God still initiated His love and made it active to pursue us, His love, okay? Then he says here, "He freed me from anxious fears." Anxious fears is like a, uh, it's like a compounded word. It's one thing to be anxious, it's another thing to be afraid, right? I can be anxious, like worried and not afraid, right? But here, the psalmist says, "He freed me." Freed me from what? From being worried and afraid. I go, "Wow, that's kind of cool," right? I feel like that sometimes, okay? But here, okay, I'm just giving you an example, this is what stuck out to me. Whatever it is that God showed you for you, because we're not just gonna do the God's word and go, "Okay, cool, man, we read a couple verses, praise the Lord, let's either go and go home." Come on, you guys. You know what I mean? God is so much for us individually, every moment of every day, but that's why we're gonna take the time this morning and just hear simply, hear simply what He's saying to you for you, everybody following me so far. Anybody want to share what God gave them so far and if you want to wait till the end?
I don't know.
Awesome. "He freed us from fear," which is, right, "freedom from depression and doubt." Perfect word. I love that, John. Anybody else? Anybody else? Go ahead.
I just got very simple praise done on me.
How did I, how did I know Erica's gonna say that? Verse one, "I bless God every chance I get. My lungs expand with His praise." I should just read in my Bible, Eric Lloyd. Right? If it was the tattoo that Eric got that's really, that would be it. I mean, this guy is a worshipper of Jesus. That was, he's this morning with his daughter, you know, praising him, awesome. Anybody else? Next slide, ready? Let's focus. "When I was desperate, I called out, and God got me out of a tight spot. God's angel sets up a circle of protection around us while we pray. Open your mouth and taste. Open your eyes and see how good God is. Blessed are you who run to Him. Worship God if you want the best. Worship opens doors to all His goodness. Young lions on the prowl get hungry, but God-seekers are full of God." Again, I want you to write down what you feel, what you see, what you hear, maybe a word, thought, something that sticks out to you. The reason again, why we're going to introduce this on a Sunday morning is because a lot of the times you guys come here, right, whoever's here is preaching or teaching or what, you know? And I really believe that this is an important step for you to grow in your personal relationship with Jesus. It's something that you can do anywhere. You can go to the beach today and get a Bible, go to the beach and do this, practice this. That's what I'm saying, introducing it to you guys, because maybe we have a service that just does this every Sunday morning. You know, we go through the Word, really just receive it for ourselves in a very personal intimate way. We, we come in and journal, right, for the first hour. We have worship on, we, you know, and we put these slides up here, and you guys just go through it and really seek the Lord. The cool thing about being in this place, the house of God together, and where the family of God is, there is the house of God, so we're under a coconut tree today, it'd be the house of God. You understand that, right? But you know what's cool about being like this? Is that it's away from all of our normal distractions. When I'm in the car, I'm distracted. I'm, I'm still worshiping, I'm listening to my radio and things like that. I listen to great Bible studies and worship CDs, but I'm distracted because I'm paying attention to people driving on the road. Whenever I'm at home, a lot of the times, you know, I'm just, you know, especially if you have children, then you've got all kinds of distractions, other things going on. The reason why we like doing it like this is because this is kind of our place, our sanctuary, with very limited distractions. That's why we would practice this on a Sunday morning, okay? Anybody want to share what, uh, what God showed them in this? Everybody hear that? Everybody understand that? She's saying this, what she said was, when she looked at verse eight about, "Open your eyes and see how in the Holy Spirit is in, uh, with her, in her, doing those things, how much more awesome His life." And then she notices the difference when the Holy Spirit is not, and He's always in you, but when He's not having the lead or preference in your life, wow, there is a change. And then, I don't know what the word, the exact word that she said, but it was like, it was something similar to atmosphere, or the word that I heard, or who said that was realm. You know, you live in a whole different realm when the Holy Spirit, you know, there's joy, and you see all kinds of incredible miracles, you know, those kinds of things. So listen to what he says here, he says, "When I was desperate." Anybody know what that feels like? Anybody have ever been in a desperate situation? He says, "I called out, and God got me out of a tight spot." Anybody ever been in a tight spot? You know what that means? Do you know how that feels? Can you picture that in your mind? Yeah? So here it is, this is real life, and that's why I'm, thanks, I can relate to it, which means, yeah, there was a time in my life, I experienced a moment, you know, a season in my life where that happened, right? And so, anybody else?
I was in the back through the door. And then He just brought that call back. Oh, how gracious the people of God are and how it have changed my life. And how.
Yeah, amazing. And Debbie, we're so grateful, you know, we, we feel the same way. You know, I remember her first meeting at Helo Medical Center. I was coming, remember, you were coming down the stairs, I was coming up the stairs. We just kind of, I didn't know who you were, but like, yeah, hesitant, you know? But because you were getting close with John, and then, um, how, that, hey, that Sunday he came, and Eric had, you know, the service had already started, you were there at the back. Eric's waving me at, waving, Eric's in the back waving me like this, he's like, huh. Remember all the miracles, you know?
And I, I totally, that desperate is, that, that is where I was. I, I just, I did not have a clue to what to do. But God told me He's gonna prove that door, and it was hard, and I did.
Yeah. Awesome. Debbie, we're grateful. We remember the day, your husband was in emergency, you had to go to work, there was no place else to go. You didn't know, I mean, nobody was here that you knew. You just walked in there, you're like, hey, you know, by faith, you walked in the front doors. And that was a bit over a year ago now, and what an amazing, you know, series of miracles that has happened in your life. We, we are definitely blessed to see how God has, uh, God has blessed you. We're really blown away. I remember that day, and I'll tell you guys just by way of reminder and testimony. Debbie came, they're scheduled to work, we prayed for it, we stopped the service. She came up here, remember, we prayed for her here, family, and we went out and prayed. And then you remember before the end of the service, right? Her husband came and walked in, he got released from the emergency, he came to the front doors. He didn't know any of us, we bombed him with love and prayer. We took him straight to a water baptism with around three different churches. We got over there, they totally fed us, and all of, all the family of God started loving on him. And he's like, "Who are all these weirdos, man?" They don't even know him, but just loving on him, and, you know, and it was just awesome, you know? And then through all of the trials and tests and life that has come your way, we've been able to, you know, be together and do so much, you know, together. But we're equally as grateful, Debbie, because we know that, I was just telling John this morning, it's hard to walk in this place if you don't know anybody. You know, like, that's the longest walk down that hall, you know? But I just remember, I remember you being right there, and I remember Eric going like this. I was looking like, hey, there's that, you know? After that, watching God do all those miracles, and literally God's peace intervened in that situation, in your situation, your crisis, immediately. I mean, I, I give, I really thank God, you know, because we see things like that all the time. Awesome, Debbie, thank you for sharing. Anybody else? Before we go to this next slide? You can, you know, the, the, do you guys get the feeling as he's pouring out his heart that you can talk to God just like that? You know, say, "Hey, open your mouth and taste, open your eyes and see how good God is." And I think of food, you know, I mean, that's, don't break it for me. I love good food, you know? But that's what he's saying, he's comparing it to, man, it's something that, you know, brings him pleasure and fulfillment and all of those things. And he's saying, "God is just like that," you know? So many times, we've always, right? Not that God is food, you know, but God is, that's how He's related to it. Okay, we're gonna go on, let's focus, let's read. Verse 11 continues, and he says, "Come, children, listen closely. I'll give you a lesson in God worship. Who out there has a lust for life? Can't wait each day to come upon beauty, come upon beauty. Guard your tongue from profanity, and no more whining through your teeth. Turn your back on sin. Do something good. Embrace peace. Don't let it get away. God keeps an eye on His friends. His ears pick up every moment in your room." Again, I want you to write down a word, a thought, an impression, something that is speaking to you for you. That is so awesome. Yeah, simple, did it? Right? That's awesome. That is awesome. Frank, stand up straight and stay calm. Verse 16, guys, let's bring focus, let's hear from him. "God won't put up with rubbous. He'll cut them from the pack. Does anyone crying for help? God is listening, ready to rescue you. If your heart is broken, you'll find God right there. If you're kicked in the gut, He'll help you catch your breath. Disciples so often get into trouble. Still, God is there every time. He is your bodyguard, shielding every bone. Not even a finger gets broken." You should write down what you're hearing, seeing, feeling. Sometimes it's a picture, sometimes it's a thought. Sometimes you guys experience something that is beyond explanation. Again, just remind you guys, God is unlimited in how He communicates to us. It could be a vision, it could be... I want you to write down, jot down what you experienced. Thanks for what has come at you. You want to share something? Huh? Come, Thomas. Come, Thomas. Come, David. Come, David. Come, David. Oh, thank you so much for sharing that. I see you with your trumpet this morning, doing some worship. Is that you, with your trumpet? That's awesome, brother. That's awesome. You want to go back to God again? It says here in verse 21 and 22 in closing, "The wicked commit suicide, slow suicide, excuse me. The wicked commit slow suicide. They waste their lives hating the good. God pays for each slave's freedom. No one who runs to Him loses out." Okay? Hallelujah. Anybody hear the last couple of verses? Anybody know? 21 is powerful, huh? "The wicked commit slow suicide. They waste their lives hating the good." You ever meet anybody like that? They just hate everything that's good, and they hate everything that's God, they hate love, they, I mean, you know, it's just weird, like, why are you so, you know, what's, what's wrong? What happened, you know? And so, this is a, a style or a type of insurance service. You know that any one of us here could have got up and read that and asked those same questions?
Yeah.
Listen, man, you know, as long as we're recognizing that the Holy Spirit is the teacher of the holy word of God, and we're asking Him to come, actually come and teach us and show us those things, and He's invited, He's a person, He's not a, He's not the wind, He's not chicken skin, He's not, you understand that? He's a person, and if you recognize Him and say, "Yeah, come and show us, teach us, help us," and we save with the right heart, He's gonna show up and teach us and help us. help us every time. Anybody can do this, you can do this with anybody, anyway. That's what I'm saying. Services might look like this, maybe we start an early service or an after service or something, but what it does is if you have a journal, it will help you grow in your understanding of God. Because what I don't want is to get into, I don't want us to get into the routine of coming in like a bunch of robots, hearing that you're going out like a bunch, no, no, no. I want you to experience, that's why I stopped in the very beginning, I read Romans eight and I said, look for each other and pray for each other right now. I could have said, hey, let's all pray, and we can say a prayer over everybody, no, no, no. Pray for each other, hold each other's hands, touch each other, pray the love of God over the babies, over the aunties, over every single man and child, pray the love of God over you guys. Why? Because so that you experience God's touch in a very personal way for you, right? And so, that is something that we can do from time to time in this going through Psalm 34, or a song or a Bible chapter together. Every week, you guys know this, because you guys, I always give an invitation to accept Jesus, and, and I just say, wherever you're at, is where you're at. You know, it's not a secret to God, God doesn't go mad, no, he knows exactly where I was at, he knows exactly what I needed, when I needed it, and has been faithful my whole life. Not that I followed God my whole life, you guys know my story, but I just say, that word inefficacious to eat, if, if something can resound in us today, let it be this verse. It says, "For it is by grace, by grace, by grace, by grace, you have been saved through faith, and this is not from yourselves. It is the gift of God, not by words, so that no one can boast, so that no one can boast." And that's all it is. It's by grace, through faith, it's a gift of God. All you and I have to do is receive it, it's a gift. It'd be silly for you to pay for it, Jesus already paid for everything on the cross of Calvary. He gives us the same invitation, every single one of us, every human in history has been given the same invitation to accept Jesus, okay? Man is separated from God by sin, and here, we say, here's the simple and easy way to receive Jesus Christ. Confess your sins, believe, turn around, and then ask God, which is pray, okay? And then here's a prayer that we'll say out loud together. We say this prayer every week as a family, and I'll show you guys why, because it's the most important thing. The Bible study was great, the worship was great, the kalka was great, being accepted and loved with one another is great, but the very most important thing is this invitation. And it's been that way from, you know, from the very beginning, right? So family, if we can look up here and again, with our hearts, you know, you know where your heart's at with God, I know where my heart's at with God, and we can say this prayer with our hearts this morning and say it out loud together, okay? Ready, begin. "God, please forgive me for all my mistakes and failures. Help me turn from living life my own selfish way and give me the strength to follow you from this day forward. I accept your free gift of eternal life. Jesus be my Lord. I believe that you are risen and alive. Please set me free, please heal me. Fill me with the Holy Spirit. Thank you, God, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen, amen, amen." You guys, that is the, the most awesome thing, the privilege, the greatest privilege that you will ever have in your life is to lead somebody to Jesus Christ, not to lead somebody to a church or to a pastor or to some denomination, and you say, hey, this is where we're at with him, and we can do it anywhere, all the time, you understand that? Most of the time, people are accepting Jesus as, you know, they can accept Jesus in their living room on their couch, right? You guys understand that? God is not limited to, you gotta, you gotta go to a specific church, you gotta say a specific prayer, you gotta go to this particular time, that's not God. Anywhere, you can say, Jesus Christ coming to your life, you guys heard me share hundreds of testimonies and stories over the years of how people have accepted Jesus. I do wanna share, you know, this morning, that again, we're introducing something, okay? The reason why is because I really believe that there's, there's times where we need to sit down and dialogue together like that through the Word. So we might start something either before or after our regular service to do this. I don't have to do the one facilitating it, we can make a schedule and have other people facilitate, but I feel that it's important that we hear from God, hear and hear, so that when we leave this place, God gave us something for us, right? Right? Church is the people of God, wherever you are, there is church, okay? So you guys, if you don't understand, be reminded of that. And so I'm just telling you guys again, you know, it's, it's all about how you spread the love, or how you share the love of God to everyday people and everyday situations, good, bad, or all those.